Call the order, Madam Clerk, please, call the road.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Here.
Councilwoman DeCuesta. Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Wiggins-Allis.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedenya.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Gorman.
Here. Seven. Seven. I thought it was right. I thought I said seven, I thought it was right. Uh, uh. Uh. Somebody's missed.
Yeah.
This is a regular conference of the City Council incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2013, which will file in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board of December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star-Ledgers, home news tribute, and complies with the provision of the open public meeting law of New Jersey. At this time, do we have any publicly, uh, here, any, uh, any resident or taxpayer here like to come forward, just City Council, any matter, please, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
It's up into the general public.
Yes.
This is up into the general public. Uh, this, uh, my name is Robert Cohn from the Sillia, but it's something that might be of interest. The failures at the Hillside Board of Education are crossing our children's futures, and the mismanagement is crossing Hillside taxpayers too, no less. They awarded insurance contracts to Elizabeth Tronies, not the Morris Divers. They spent over $20,000 in taxpayer money to send their kids to a school in Elizabeth. Can you imagine that? They sent their kids to a desert, huh? Something must be going on.
What's wrong?
And then I think that the Governor of New York thinks that everyone that has a sniffle should get shots.
They blue shot. Thank you. Yeah, any, uh, anyone else, uh, any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Christopher Nelson.
Okay.
I'm 746 Trumbull Street. As you know, I came before you last Tuesday, and, uh, I just wanted to, you know, see if we can touch on what I discussed with you last Tuesday in regards to the park playground, um, on Court Street in South Park, Miller Playground. And I just wanted to know, have you, any of yous, uh, considered giving any recommendation or looked into it yet, or, uh, would it be something possible that's doable, being that I have the backing of, um, the recreation director, Mr. Odessa, saying that it was doable, and as I say again, it was up to, you know, uh, Ms. Goldman and Ms. Perkins, Councilwoman Ms. Perkins, if yous can sort of like, you know, hammer that out if it's doable, you know, and he said all it would take for yous to draw up a bond or whatever, and, and he could take it from there.
Uh, Mr. Nelson, I believe in our blockwork meeting is recalled, that's how you found out about a lot of things, that's what the blockwork meeting is all about, and when you brought that to my attention, the blockwork meeting, I said to you, uh, we would, we would address that situation, uh, and we are going to address that situation, that's it, doable. We're working on that, uh, we passed that, the information you passed on to Mr. Odessa, uh, he, we're gonna be addressing it now. How soon we'll get that into the pipeline, I don't know just yet, but we are gonna address it, yes.
Oh, beautiful, then, then, that, that's good, because I, I kind of walked away with the wrong impression, and...
Well, not personal with that.
Well, not to be argumentative, to, you know, reiterate what I said to you back then, but you showed little interest, like, the same, uh, documents or pictures that I presented that concerned me in the neighborhood, this is why I had to come forward before the conference, before, um, you all Tuesday, because you had a little interest, you didn't want to see the pictures, and so that was dismissed to me, so that's why I came here last Tuesday, so I could bring it before all parties there who may be able to help me and give some relief, because we talking about the quality of life, and what I'm seen to be inheriting, what I have not experienced in the past, is like I say, roads is, is getting out of hand, and then, I, like I said, I was looking for a public notice that I'm accustomed to getting when some new development take place in the community, and when you mentioned, um, regional industrial garbage company is gonna be moved directly behind us, you know, I, I was unaware, like you said, it took me to come to the meetings, other than that, I would've never knew, and that, that's something that, um, is kind of like, you know, something I think should give more consideration about another relocation, if, if possible, because as I was trying to show you about the pictures, and I think yous have, I don't know what you done with, but you have.
Recreation, replacement.
Yeah, and, and it's getting really out of hand, and I didn't come here to make speculation on myself or anybody else, but, you know, many of the neighbors had the same concern, so I'm not trying to rally anybody up, I'm coming to you as, as a tax, you know, what's concerned about, and that's, that's why I'm here today.
All right. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, any other resident or taxpayer like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, please, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, closing before she mean, just before we start the regular meeting, I just want to bring a couple things to you guys' attention. As you know, uh, last Thursday, that meeting was, uh, the Democratic Committee held a special meeting, uh, in regards of, to select three nominees to replace, or possibly one of the candidate would place the vacant seat on the first ward. Uh, that meeting was held last Thursday at 6:00, uh, and out of that, uh, meeting, three names has been submitted to this governing body to select one of the candidates to replace the vacant seat on the first ward. Uh, I, I have decided, unless you guys tell me something different, we will held, have this meeting next Tuesday at 6:30. Uh, and reach why I select 6:30 is because I believe the band will be here next week, we don't want to hold the kids here, so I figure we'll do 6:30 for our special meeting for the, uh, the nominees that we was selected, was hidden, submitted forward to us to select one out of those three, uh, and, uh, after that, we started our regular meeting for the, uh, with the, uh, Elizabeth High School band, and so they can be presented with their awards, and once that, then we're going to the regular meeting. Is that good, anybody's okay with that? 6:30, okay. And the three names, or you have the list before you, was Carlos Torres, George Dudas, and Sergio Granadas, uh, and next week, we will, uh, this governing body will select one of those three to, to fulfill the unexcited turn, uh, that our colleague, Councilman Grover's, has, uh, duly done so well in the first ward, okay? Everybody's okay with that? Yep. And the other thing is, two things, is that you guys had asked for a report on the indulgence in Coco Banga, uh, the police department, they said they could not release those reports now because they're still on investigation, uh, with the prosecutors, so until they finalize their, uh, uh, investigation, we're not privy to have that information, so as soon as they finish that, we'll get those reports. Uh, and I believe it was one of the things, last but not least, their land uses ordinance, I kind of mentioned to most guys, uh, their land use that we had, that was cruel, and that being redefined, and as soon as they finish that up, they'll get that back to us. Uh, and I think, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue, I think the Councilwoman and, uh, Sedenya, you guys were talking about that loading dock sign, loading zone sign, I don't know, whatever happened to that, you guys?
Um, from my standpoint, I'm fine.
Okay.
As long as it's up to Councilwoman, if she has concerns.
Okay, then, so, uh, we'll wait till you get back to us on that, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Councilman Keenan, I think you had one, you said that was be on hold. Very, very. Okay, that's it.
I have one, one question.
Go ahead.
Uh, since we're not privy to those police reports yet.
Yes.
Can we keep that one request for the festival on hold, uh, until...
Okay, you want the festival on hold? Okay.
Is that, is that still on hold?
Yes, yes, that's still on hold. You want it on hold?
Okay, I just want to make sure we get those reports.
Okay.
Just to add, I know, um, the shooting that occurred in Coco Bongo sixteen months ago, supposedly it's under investigation too, like even though it was sixteen months ago, I just wanted to add, thank you.
Okay, okay, that's it?
Yeah.
But, you're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Letter dated January 3, 2013, from his Honors Mayor advising that subject to confirmation is making the following appointments: Chief Municipal Prosecutor, Norma M. Margado Esquire; Assistant Municipal Prosecutors, Ashton E. Thomas, Esquire Patricia A. Mack; Tangela Mitchell Thomas; Temporary Municipal Prosecutors, Robert Carroll, Suzette Cabadas; Lawrence M. Centany; Kevin D. Harris; Annabella De Cruz Milo; Annette Kiano; Christopher Howard, for a term of one year effective January 1, 2013.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 8, 2013, from his Honored the Mayor advising that subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, he here with reappoints Roman A. Montez Esquire, Elizabeth to serve as presiding judge of the municipal court for a term of three years effective February 1, 2012.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 7, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into and sign all necessary documents with, uh, foreign intergovernmental services agreement, for licensed inspectors to provide assistance with inspection services for taxi cab and limousine enforcement with the city of, uh, Linden, for the period of December 15, 2012 through December 14, 2013, for a fee of $10,000.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 10, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Inc., Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories, to include but not limited to brakes, filters, and spark plugs for the Department of Public Works, for the period December 25, 2012 through January 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any questions? Yes.
Do we have a, a similar store in Elizabeth that we quarter brakes, filters, spark plugs, so we could generate revenue in a city of Elizabeth that has supplied money to Bayonne, New Jersey?
It's, I can find out, um, I can tell you that, that this particular vendor is part of the state contract.
I'm sure it's part of the state.
And that's the reason why it's possible that...
I understand, but that doesn't make it to be a good price or a good whatever, just because it's from the state. I'm sure we have stores in Elizabeth that could qualify under the state agreement if they are applying, so why don't you look into it before, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna stop this, but it looks like it's just a reputation, and it's in a way in and a way out of the room, you know? We have to find other solution that you could keep the business in Elizabeth, we pay taxes in Elizabeth, we want to make sure that the money are kept in the city of Elizabeth, and we're not doing that, we keep going out of town all the time, and there's always specification, big, I'm proceeding, whatever, well, guess what, hire somebody that proceeded right specification.
As a matter of, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. President, that I know just from past experience here that we have multiple contracts where we get parts from different vendors, and I know one of them in the city is AutoZone, which is on Broadway Avenue, but there are some in the city and there are some outside of the city as well.
There should be some body in Elizabeth Avenue, not too far away from, like, the old Armonia Bank or whatever, but, you know, I should check into it, I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but for the future, we should think, you know, employees for Elizabeth residents, always, uh, promote all the business in Elizabeth, so, you know, those are the one, they pay my salary, so I want to give it back to them.
Okay.
Ah, Patricia?
Anything else, Councilman?
I preach that all the time, so, you know.
That's it?
Thank you.
Put it on.
Letter dated January 10, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Triangle Communications, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, for the purchase of communications equipment for the Department of Public Works for the period January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to renew the policy of insurance with Admiral Insurance Company, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, through the agent of record, Hughes Plumbing and Associates, Somerville, covering public officials and employees liability for the period of January 31, 2013, through January 31, 2014, at an annual premium of $65,508.26.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, can we define what public official, who are those people that are gonna be getting this liability? Can somebody name who they are, that only, austroelector official, the mayor, what are the people, public official, what does it mean? Who actually cover under this policy of, and again, another specification that we can go off for bid, I remember when I was an insurance commissioner, we trying to get three quotation in order to save money to the city.
That's, that's still done, Councilman.
Yeah, but $66,000, I'm sure that, well, let's find out who you're covering under this policy, I'm curious to...
I know that there are several policies that cover members of your honorable body as well as various public officials, like the city treasurer, the tax assessor...
People that deal with money, whatever, I understand.
Right, but as, as for who this specific policy covers, I will find out.
Right.
Uh, but I also want to reiterate that, uh, even though this isn't EUS, that they, the insurance fund commission still solicits three quotes and goes with the, the best price.
And can we get where those other quotation that came up for this, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Put it on. Okay. Put it on.
Yeah. Put it on, yeah.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into and execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Elizabeth and the borough of Seabright for the use of a Department of Public Works dump truck, for the period January 23, 2013 through January 22, 2014, at no cost to the borough of Seabright, they will provide the union incentive for the dump truck during the term of the agreement.
Any...
Mr. President, super, it's a good gesture from our part of the city to do that, I'm sure that, besides, we did send our fire department, some of our police people during the problem at the time, I think that's a good gesture from the city, if we could do more, it really would be nice to do that, because we give back to all the people that, you know, someday they might be close to us in the future too, so that's a good thing from the part of the administration. That's why I applaud, Mr. President.
Councilman, with this administration, I, I don't expect anything but...
But good.
Good things, so, uh, you know...
Hallelujah.
They're always trying to work and help, lend a helping hand.
Absolutely.
Put it on.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Nickerson Corporation, Union Beach, for the purchase of lockers for the Police Department SWAT, under the Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission Cooperative Pricing System, in the amount of $22,724.25.
Any questions?
Is it that they don't have lockers now, or is it replacing the lockers?
I, I believe that, that it's replacement, uh, the SWAT team has very specific, uh, equipment, shall we say, that needs to be stored away, and, and that's what this is achieving, but very little.
Yes, thank you. Okay, question?
Super.
Put it on.
I'm sure James would be very happy with this, too.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to David Fire Systems, Hackensack, New Jersey, to purchase fire alarm services for various departments under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for the period September 29, 2012 through September 28, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Hertrich Heat Services, Inc., Milford, Delaware, for the purchase of two 2013 Jeep Patriot four-wheel drive, four-door sport vehicles for the Department of Recreation, at an individual cost of $18,879, totaling $37,758.
Now, I want to hear if it's a replacement. If it's a replacement.
Councilman, uh, yes, it's a replacement.
It's a replacement, okay, but you know how I am, I was gonna say something. It's like equipment.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely a replacement.
Yeah, that's, okay, good.
Those Jeeps should be able to go on a sidewalk and clean the snow during the wintertime, is that correct also?
I'm sorry, Councilman?
Those Jeeps, I mean, they...
Oh, they're four-wheel drive, so in theory, they...
With the snowplow, they could clean the street, you know, the sidewalk around the parks and whatever.
In theory, absolutely.
Great, come on.
Okay. Ready?
Okay.
Letter dated January 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Safeguard Safety Shoe Company, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for safety boots for the Public Works Department laborers, Recreation Department laborers, and Health Department dog warden, under the Morris County Co-op Contract, for the period January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2013, at a total cost not to exceed $25,000.
Any questions? Wait a minute.
Letter dated January 14, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., Appleton, Wisconsin, for one mobile phone support delivery unit and one chemical agent support unit, in the amount of $1,641,828.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated December 31, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to credit said individuals who are entitled to a senior citizen disability deduction and a veteran deduction for the 2012 tax year, as per the delineated list totaling $2,500.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 7, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider approval of the city's tax year 2013 tax management plan for the period January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 7, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to accept payment of taxes without interest charges, provided said payment is made within the 10th calendar date, following the date upon which the saying became payable, and fix the rate of interest to the charge for delinquent tax.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 10, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to refund cancel and overbilling of the 2012 property taxes on the property located at 90, 94 West Grand Street, in the sum of $5,795.84.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 15, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2013 state fiscal year budget by budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 15, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, recommending that your honorable body consider the approval of a refunding bond ordinance for the general obligations refunding bonds, Series 2005, not to exceed $12,650,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 10, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated December 26, 2012, which authorized a first-time homebuyer loan for Julia and Carlos Caligro to acquire 620 Chetwood Street, specifically to increase the period of affordability from five years to 10 years, in accordance with home program rules and regulations.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 14, 2013, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a community development block grant agreement with United Youth in New Jersey, Elizabeth, to provide funds to administer the agency's after-school safe haven program for at-risk youngsters and for summer recreational trips, for the period July 1, 2012 until June 30, 2013, in the amount of $17,000.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, last year, that, they also went on a trip, or they didn't, they didn't take any trip, uh, the, uh, for this particular, uh, contract?
That's something, Councilman, I haven't looked into, because I don't know if they made the trip or not.
Because I remember, in a fest, they used to go on special trips, which is good for the kids.
Uh-huh.
Uh, can we find that out?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll check and find out.
Just for curiosity. Thanks, Mr. President.
Is it a well-run program?
Yeah, United Youth in New Jersey is which one?
I believe that's, uh...
Salam?
Yeah, Salam, is it?
Ishmael.
I thought it was based out of Bricksler.
Yes.
It's a wide 220 west Jersey.
Higher.
Then I have a new vision.
Oh, wait a minute.
I don't know.
United?
I thought it was Charlotte.
That's Charlotte, that's Charlotte.
Charlotte.
That's my Charlotte.
Charlotte Brown.
She was on Wall Street.
She was, but they moved.
They moved.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Charlotte, sorry, that's Charlotte.
So, I want to know.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a boy named...
Yeah, it's a name.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I think he's Al's, Al's...
That is Charlotte for Al's.
Okay. Let me know if they want that.
Letter dated January 15, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to enter into agreement with Harbor Consultants, Inc., Cramford, New Jersey, for planning and engineering services, to the Planning and Zoning Boards, and the Department of Planning and Community Development, for the period December 27, 2012 through December 26, 2013, at a total cost of $60,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 4, 2013, from the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth, recommending that the land use element of the master plan in the City of Elizabeth be amended to include the revised Durant Street redevelopment plan.
Any questions?
Mr. President, just to be clear on my thoughts, because I read several bunch of papers and whatever, the, uh, the Planning Board did approve at the December meeting, the revised one that we received packages that was held sometime in July, or if I'm not mistaken, over the summer?
For the grant?
Right.
But, yes.
And that would be concurrent with a group of people that were actually looking for that kind of, of settlement or adjustment.
Yeah, and we, I believe we proved that.
Right, they approved that, right.
The only thing that we didn't do, Councilman, was, I remember, I don't think we revised the master plan, I think that's what they asked for.
That's it, that's good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Letter dated January 3, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached, uh, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties, in the amount of $2,574.34.
Any questions?
This one, yes.
That's for the liens, you know, when you clean the debris, I didn't know we got, called Public Works, where they, they, you got the, uh, people from the Health Department, they go around and check the vacant lots and et cetera, et cetera?
It's not the bike way, right? It's not this one?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Letter dated January 14, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to request the New Jersey Department of Transportation to grant the City of Elizabeth an extension of one year, extending the award date from October 20, 2012 to October 20, 2013, due to the extraordinary effects of Hurricane Sandy, for the bike hike and roll-throughway extension.
Any questions? Put it on. This, this thing is happening at six o'clock. They get on one hat.
Oh, yeah? I thought it wasn't the first one. It's the first one.
They did, they did.
Yeah, it's another $300,000 for the first. I don't know what's going on with the first.
Go ahead.
Letter dated January 14, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting a contract amendment number one to the contract with CHA Consulting, Inc., to provide professional engineering services in connection with the design and construction management of the improvement to O'Brien Field, in the amount of $205,800, specifically for additional work related to soils, licensed site remediation professional, and storm water design services, at an additional cost not to exceed $38,000, thereby raising the amount of the contract to $243,800.
I don't know. See, I gotta close my mouth. Put him on.
You think we should have told him?
Why not?
I don't know. There it goes again.
Any money left for the... Yeah.
There it goes again, the six...
Mr. President, we getting close to that $5 million already.
Put it on.
By the time we get done, it's gonna be a $5 million project. By the time we get done, it's gonna be a $5 million project.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Letter dated January 8, 2013 from the Fire Director requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the United States Department of Homeland Security theme of fiscal year 2012 Assistance to Firefighters' Fire Prevention and Safety Program to purchase code enforcement and education materials to assist in the implementation of juvenile fire prevention and overall safety programs in an amount not to exceed $400,000 with a 20% match for fire departments that serve populations over 50,000.
Any questions?
Mr. President, this is a very super educational type of a thing, you know. The small children, I think they're learning, but they're learning at a small scale, and then when they come to the high school level, we have some nutcrackers that they like to pull the fire alarm or shoot firecrackers or whatever. Maybe they should spend some time educating some of the high school kids of fire prevention, you know, to really teach them every time you pull that level, not only jeopardize people's life because they have to fly down, they have to, you know, squeeze between cars, go through red light or green light or whatever, and just about, not to talk negatively, one day we had four alarms, which was ridiculous, and it was called in and out of the building. So if you could direct, Mr. President, you know, whoever's in charge of this particular, you know, fire prevention people, that maybe they should start and come to Elizabeth High School and be able to give some lecture to the adults so they could make sense, and by the time they graduate, they will have some maturity about fire prevention, how important it is, not take it for granted. And if you catch anybody, it should be a fine, not just a slap on the wrist and let it go, because it definitely is ridiculous at times that we have to do things like that. And I'm an educator, and I'm there to stop the traffic, sometime even when we stop traffic, I stop traffic. Some of the drivers, they just like to go right through, and I said, "Don't make a U-turn because the engine is coming." Now, you gotta block the engine coming up. And many times, I'd request through Mr. Costco to have a police when we have a fire, or I'm sure that the fire department communicate with the police, so somebody should respond right, and pearl and bros, you know, to stop the traffic, to come down and direct them in a different direction, because it's so chaotic at times when we have a fire drill or emergency situation.
Well, Councilman, I think you're absolutely right. What we'll do, put a letter to the Director of Public Works, private fire prevention month, which is October, maybe you have a whole month, October, for fire prevention, will make sure that they get over to the high school.
Absolutely, Mr. President, it's never too late to learn. Some people get their master degree, doctorate degree at 90, 88 years old. Some of those kids, they need to learn, even after they graduate, how important it is not to play around with fire regulations.
Okay, Council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated January 11, 2013 from the Police Director requesting to establish handicap parking spaces in the fifth ward, 1051 Lafayette Street, personalized.
Yes, put it on.
Mr. President, we already approved that four months ago. This is the one that...
Yeah, but what it is, Councilman, there was place in front of another person home, what we did the other...
No, Mr. President, so I turned it up, there was place across the street in an area that was, they're not supposed to be jeopardize somebody else. So apparently, whoever's doing the job is not doing according they're supposed to do. I was the ward councilman at the time when we applying and we direct them to place across the street, there's an empty lot, what a fad, it wasn't blocking anybody.
Councilman, can I reiterate?
Yeah.
Since that took place, they put this, if you look at 1051 and 1047, the home that the person, 1051, was placed in front of 1047, at that time, 1047, just hang on a minute, 1047 did not require a handicap sign, but since then, they are requesting a handicap, as you see, the requirement of a handicap sign. So I met with Scotty McNabb, we have resolved the problem, everything is okay, so this is what they agreed to place those signs at the location where they are now. Everybody's gonna be happy now.
Good, I'm glad that you did that, Council, because even Ms. Shockley, she got in touch with me.
Correct.
She says, "Oh, I'm also handicapped, I would like to have the same thing that the guy put in front of me, I could have that." I say, "You have to go through a police department, the City Council will give you the okay." But this gentleman, it's been over two years.
Yes.
And then we, so now everybody's okay.
Everybody, Councilman, I would never walk away unless everybody was happy.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll get it, please.
That's good.
Okay.
Second ward, 542 Richmond Street.
Put it on.
First ward, 542 Fulton.
Can you pull that up, please?
First ward, 233 Second Street.
Pull that one, too.
First ward, 122 South Park Street.
That one you could put on.
First ward, 108 Inglewood Place.
Hold on, can I get back down?
Okay.
Find that one again.
You don't see it? Fifth ward, 1047 Lafayette Street.
Yes, put it on.
Deletions, 919 Anna Street, 150 Grove Street, 918 Olive Street, 506 Fulton Street, and 833 Allen Street. Letter dated January 11, 2013 from the Police Director, recommending to amend Chapter 10.8 entitled Stop Intersections, Yield Intersections Through Streets and No Passing Zone, specifically to install a multi-way stop sign at the intersection of Clarkson Avenue and Fillmore Street and Adams Avenue and Mary Street. Also signage to prevent vehicles from blocking the intersection to be installed at South Broad Street and Garden Street.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, those two are mine that I requested some time ago, and I'm happy to hear that the Traffic Division and the engineers have approved those two, like to have the ordinance put together so that this way, we can have those put in that the residents in that area, and I'm sure Councilman, the one over there on Clarkson and Fillmore, the other side, they're gonna be happy as well.
Yeah, well, I'm very happy, too, but I'm very upset, because I have several requested. The problem is, when people coming from McDonald's, they don't make the stop sign, they go right through. Now, I requested traffic to have somebody to give us speeding tickets there, I had the sign at least seven times with a speed limit when you're coming, 25, 30, whatever. But when I requested from the people on Clarkson Avenue, which F is where most of the residential are in my ward, okay, those few homes, the Toretto family, whatever, they are in the second ward behind McDonald's, when I requested, the best solution to the problem is to have somebody giving us speeding tickets, because of this becoming a highway race or whatever. When I put complaint at nighttime, there were drag racing or whatever, nothing happened. Now, you requested to have a three-way stop, which, to me, I have no problem, would not for block, you have another stop sign that nobody makes a stop, it goes right through, make a right turn, you know, and I'm telling you, if you want to look to make a revenue, that would be the area to put somebody steady.
Councilman, I'm glad you said, I mean, I certainly have had the same complaints by the residents on my side, and particularly in the summer is when we have more of that problem there, because they gather over at the McDonald's. I'm hoping this will help to alleviate.
It should.
I've also requested the same thing that you have, that they go out there and monitor.
They have to do that.
And that, so I think, you know, as it gets warmer, the weather gets better, I'm hoping that will happen.
Matter of fact, Mr. President, they could also do further absence after you pass the buses, just before you reach Summer Street, right in the middle between Williams Field, to put another two-way stop so you could stop those people from speeding. You have to actually teach them, you go one block, you stop, then you go again, you stop, because otherwise, it's a speed zone, especially at nighttime, and even during the daytime. So I think I might need to see that, but like I said, you have to sometime, you have to punish the people in order for them to learn the lesson, and believe it or not, I might be the first one to get caught, because I go through that road all the time.
And you speak.
Well, I don't speak, so I'm not bad, you know what I'm saying? But the guy that really gone 45, 50 miles an hour, he's not gonna get caught, or he might be related to a police officer, then he doesn't get to take a story.
The other one is on South Broad and Garden, I'm hoping the signs that they want to put up will help out. Unfortunately, the city couldn't do it because it's accountable, and that, so...
Did we, you know, fight the county about it?
My understanding is that there's been some contact, but I'm hoping we can...
What I will do, what I did, gentlemen, let you know that, so I've been asking them to do a multi-stop sign on Adams, and that's how the other sign got involved, I asked them, did they have anything else on file while I was doing mine, and you brought up the fact, and that's what I called you about, remember I called you? This is what they was talking about. So I said, "Listen, those guys have been asking for it, let's put them on if you can." So they did. So now, you're telling me it's down on Summer Street someplace, and you're saying...
Not the St. Mary, I'm okay, I'm happy with what you did. I'm very happy, but I'm saying...
Well, no, there's the two of them that are on this report, yeah, I'm good with both of them, and I like to see us move forward on both of them.
What you said was someplace...
The one on South Broad and Garden Street, that requires the county's assistance.
Okay, okay, all right, that's what I wanted to, because what we'll do, I'll see if I can, we can, I'll ask the traffic officer, you'll do, I'll see if he will send a letter over to the county, say we can't move that forward.
That would be great, because he had, the county tried to put some signs up, but the county said they couldn't, and it's basically to stop people from blocking that intersection. If you're coming off of 1 and 9 at the Garden Street and trying to cross out Broad, it's very difficult to do this, people block that.
Okay, that's what we're trying to avoid. I'll speak to you, you have a special, no, I can see if we can address that, I'll share that for you, okay?
Mr. President, I guess the second ward has some kind of a connection within the Police Department to get three things at one time.
You got two, no, one of them, in all fairness, Councilman, one of them is mine.
Okay, well, good job, Councilman, good job.
Don't worry, I don't have to say that, when I do the one surround, I still have some other traffic. So, I'm grateful, right?
Anything else?
Yes, letter dated January 3, 2013 from the City Treasurer submitting the Treasurer's report of receipts and disbursements for the month of October, 2012, and a statement of bank balances and investments as of October 31, 2012.
Any questions?
Before we do that, President?
Go ahead, Councilman, hold it.
Other than the handicap at 122 South Park, everything else, maybe we should keep on hold.
108 Inglewood.
Let my replacement make those decisions.
Okay, so they're on hold except for 122 South Park.
Thank you. Need a motion to go into closed session.
Yes.
Pro call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanian.
Aye.
Councilman Madja.
Aye.
Assemblyman...
ORSI, and I'll give you, I will leave you the information of the number, and that's about it.
Just that one, Council? Thank you, Council. All right, Councilman Sedanian?
Just two things, wanted to receive an update on, I requested no parking anytime on Travers Avenue, that's behind Twin City, I haven't heard anything from the Police Department.
Travers Avenue, what about?
Yeah, Travers Avenue, it's a street behind Twin City. Another thing, I wanted to request a four-way stop sign on the corner of Durant Street and Cross Avenue, it's right by the school, School 18, it's just that, like, a lot of people, they don't respect the crossing guard, it's just better to have a four-way for the safety of the kids of the school. So that's Durant Street and Cross Avenue. And my last question is, I know there were different cameras that were placed throughout the city, and I just wanted to see if we could put in a request to have cameras if it's possible. One on Sherman Avenue, which is the street that continues after Cross Avenue that goes into Newark, it's just, that street, it's like a lonely street, and unfortunately, it attracts a lot of activity.
Wait, wait, that's, it's almost like always, because...
Along the cemetery, the backside of the cemetery, yeah, it just goes straight into Newark. So many times, too, like when there's stolen vehicles, they go up that street, prostitution, they go to that street, and I just feel as though having a camera there will definitely help out there, and also, if it's possible, on Newark Avenue exiting Elizabeth, too, just for safety, it's like pretty much the entryway and the exit from Elizabeth to Newark, and we know that many times when there's stolen vehicles, that's the direction they go, and just there's a lot of prostitution that sometimes happens in those corners, so just wanted to put in a request for that.
Okay. We'll look at that.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Councilman, just wanted to make mention to Councilman Sedanian that there's a project underway to place cameras on Newark Avenue, so hopefully that would cover the location.
Okay.
As for sure, we'll look into it.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Councilman Nelson?
Mr. President, thank you. Like I said earlier, I was certainly grateful to hear two of my traffic requests were approved and moving forward, however, I have two others.
You have two others?
I have, yeah, one that I requested back in October, actually, I had a resident that complained living over on Greer Avenue for 50 years, I have a copy of the letter here, city clerk, that was sent out, requesting that they look into this, living there 50 years, they took two spaces over there, painted it yellow, we don't know why, and they were asking why, why is this suddenly being changed to a no parking zone? So, you know, with the parking being at a premium throughout the city, you know, residents are concerned about this, so I have a copy of that letter here, okay? So we'll get, send the, yeah, second request to get an update on that, I appreciate it. This other request, Mr. President, as you know, you received a copy of this from this resident in my ward on Watson Avenue, this request was made two years ago, still have not gotten a final response on it.
That's from Watson Avenue?
Watson Avenue, yeah. Request was made to look into it, to make it a one-way to possibly be able to park on both sides of the street. Lieutenant Dugan got back to us in December of 2010, denying the one-way request, however, indicating that it being parking on both sides of the street was a possibility. I'm not sure, I got a copy of the report that was sent, I guess from the traffic engineer, T and M, to Lieutenant Dugan, which is what I received, but it just says at the bottom here, therefore it is not necessary for Watson Avenue to be made one-way to accommodate additional on-street parking. So I'd like to see if we could look into this. Lieutenant Dugan also indicated that he was waiting at that time for a response back from the fire and ambulance departments on that. I have not heard anything yet, and as you know, I got an inquiry, and you were copied on that, or we also received the same inquiry from the residents over there, so I'd like to see if we could expedite this, if you could help, you know, expedite this one in particular, I will leave a copy here with the city clerk in terms of the report that I got back. I received this in December, it's dated October of 2010.
Okay. Let, just to let you know, Councilman, we're supposed to have a meet with Lieutenant Dugan today, but he's out sick, and I was gonna discuss and talk about that, but he did, he called me and let me know that he was out sick, so we canceled the meet, but as soon as you come in, we're gonna discuss that, because he and I talked about that briefly on the phone about that situation, I told him, I said, "It's not fair to you or the peoples in that area, that they should have to wait for one." So we will get, hopefully get it cleared up the next time.
Yeah, unfortunately, I lost sight of it myself.
That's okay, that's okay.
You know, and since the resident brought it to our attention, you know, I dug up some of my records and found that piece of information, and also had notes of, again, Detective, Lieutenant Dugan denying the one-way, and saying he was waiting for the fire and ambulance to get back to them to determine whether or not parking on both sides would be feasible.
He mentioned something that briefly on the phone with me, what you just said, exactly about the fire department, but I told him, I said, "Why don't you wait till we meet him, face to face, and then I'll get all that report back, and then I'll bring that forward to you."
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yes, Council, last, remember, it's once around, not twice around.
You asked me why I don't have anything, and I just, I don't know which ward it is.
Well, you gotta wait, he's done.
I know.
Wait, 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 he's not finished yet, I thought you finished.
I have one other thing here.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a resident that has been complaining on Eli Street.
Okay.
That a couple of years ago, two maybe, two and a half years ago, some work was done either by Elizabeth Town Gas, the Water Company, I'm sorry, not Elizabeth Town Gas, E-Town, and ever since then, they have been problems with their sewer backing up into their house, they're saying that's a problem, that resident has recently provided me with a bill that they had to pay on the 12th of January, costing them over $400 to have it unclogged, and it indicates here on the note that they had to put the snake in 25 to 30 feet in order to unclog it. Now, I don't know if that's part of the city's responsibility or whose responsibility it is, but I'd like to see if engineering just could be sent up to them so they can look into it and get back to us. Even here in the note, the person that they got to do to unclog it says that the line could be a problem in the street, but not sure. So I'm hoping that maybe engineering could take... So, I'm hoping that maybe Engineering could take a look into it, and...
You're gonna leave a copy with you?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave a copy of this as well.
We'll take a look at it.
So, that's good, so we can have Engineering, I've had Engineering out there once before.
Okay.
And I wanna see if this can help them, Mike Yalanda from Engineering went out in October.
Okay.
When does it happen, last year?
Um, this past year, yeah, this past October, he was out there to try to see if he could help, but they continue to have the same problem, and they just dropped me off the recent bill that they had to...
Do you know if there's any trees around there?
No, there aren't.
No trees?
No trees, no.
So, it always, it developed after the work?
After they did some work, but they not remember who it was that did the work.
But they should have, right here, the city.
Yeah, they're, they're saying they don't have any, so...
Well, they gotta have something. Okay, we'll, we'll, I'll check on it, we'll, we'll do some root finding, okay?
So, that, and that's all that I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah, I, I don't know what there's, Mr. Joe's Ward or Mr. Sedena's Ward, on Cherry Street by Hamilton, a 300 block, there's, it's a school, and it's, I've been going there for the last week or so on a daily basis, it's a, it's another, I, another racing area for people to speed, if we could put some sign, 25 mile, of school, children nearby, and maybe have somebody to enforce with a radar, I don't know if it's your ward or is it, okay? And it really, it's a, from the bridge down, they actually speeding all the way into the next traffic light.
But it's on Cherry?
It's on Cherry, where Hamilton is, right in that stretch.
Right away.
We need to put some sign, 25 mile zone, or have the traffic to go there a couple days with a radar, and, you know, do something that would tell them, there's a school on the left, they shouldn't be able to speed 40, 50 miles, soon as they get on top of the bridge, they go to the light, zoom, it's like highway.
So, you're requesting 25 mile, nine zone, sign from the bridge?
Right.
Down to, what's that, Prince Street?
Well, mainly, mainly it's between Westfield Avenue and stairs.